Could you please join me in saluting the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stay standing, Tom. I just want to stay standing and take a moment of silence for the death of longtime football coach and friend, Armin Colombo. Armin was obviously a big reason why Brockton is known as the city of champions. I had the pleasure of working with Mr. Colombo my first three years as his administrator at Brockton High, was his last three as a teacher. He retired in 2003, came to Brockton as a teacher in 1969. As you know, he's a Brockton High graduate in 1949 and a lifelong Brockton resident and Brocktonian, so we mourn the loss of a great friend and champion, so I want to take a moment to recognize Armin Colombo. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Colombo. We obviously lost a great champion in the city, but I think there are other people here on the committee that have known Coach Colombo for a long time. If anyone would like to say a few words, now might be an appropriate time. Mr. Gormley?
Yes, I've known Armin since I was 14. When I started as a student at Brockton High School, I played one year of JV football and got to play under him. I wasn't very good, yeah. But he never treated anybody any differently. He made me feel like I was a part of the team even though I didn't play. But as I got older, I ended up moving to his street. He built the first house on Southland Terrace and raised all of his children there and became a good friend of mine over the years. He was one of the people that encouraged me to run for school committee and always signed my nominees papers first. And he also encouraged me to make some changes when I brought forth the idea to change the administrative restriction on coaching. That came from him, despite what some people may think. That rule was created because of Armin and it always stuck in his craw. And I was really proud that we were able to get some movement on that and should be resolved hopefully pretty soon. He was just a great guy, you know, anybody that knew him, to know him was to love him. I don't know anybody that didn't like him. So it was very sad, but it was very nice to see everybody at his wake and a lot of my former teammates and players. He really touched a lot of people and he really is, to me, the greatest Brocktonian.
Coach Colombo, when I attended Brockton High School, and one thing about Coach Colombo was that he loved his family, but he always made students and players, even if you didn't play for him, he made everyone feel like you were part of his family. And I think that goes a long way. So this city is going to miss him and we wish the very best for all of his family and friends and, you know, may he rest in peace.
The next school committee meeting on the 20th, there'll be his presentation. Peter Colombo will be here. Hopefully Betty Colombo will be here and some other members of the family will be doing a presentation to the Colombo family.
Wonderful. Okay, the second item is the hearing of visitors. We do not have any this evening, so we will move to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is the regular bundling of routine matters that the school committee considers and reviews. Is there any item that any particular member would like to remove and speak about individually? No? Okay, may I please have a motion then on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve A, B, C, D, E, F, G, and H.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay. Communication, Mr. Thomas, reporter superintendent of schools. I see you are filling in for Superintendent Smith.
Yes, thank you. Superintendent Smith is at the conference for school committees, I believe, down the Cape. So first I want to welcome Jayla Smith, new Brockton High School student representative on the school committee, so we're going to let her get settled in and then she's going to give us a report. So we welcome and thank you for being here tonight.
Good evening, Jayla. How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good. Can you just tell us a little bit about yourself, what year you are and what you're involved with at the high school?
I'm a senior this year and I'm a student athlete. I play soccer and basketball. I'm a part of the National Honor Society. I'm a part of the Senior Executive Committee also. And this year I'm hoping to try out for the tennis team too, so hopefully I'll make that, yeah.
Wonderful. It seems like you are taking full advantage of all the different opportunities at Brockton High.
Yes.
And this is a very busy year for you because you also have to, you know, plan for next year.
Yes.
What's on the horizon or what do you want to be on the horizon?
For right now, I don't know what school I want to choose to go to next year, but I know I want to like follow the path to become a podiatrist.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
Wow, that's great. Good aspirations.
Thank you.
Well, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Thomas?
Jayla, do you think you want to share with us about the goings on at VHS tonight?
It's just, it's fun. This year and last year honestly have been like you could have noticed a change in the students. I think it's especially because of Dr. Murray. Like he's changed a lot and I say that just because he's sitting right there, but he's, like honestly, the students all love him. I never hear a bad thing about him and like everyone just seems happier to come to school.
Jayla, did Dr. Murray promise?
No, he didn't.
Special cafeteria privileges?
No, no, no.
Or he's bringing back the big chocolate chip cookies or something?
No.
Is there something going on that we need to know about?
No.
All right, well, if there is, you just come and talk to us, okay?
Okay.
All right. Anything coming up in terms of like at the high school, any events or anything that we?
The boys have a soccer game tomorrow night, so hopefully they win that and another state championship.
Okay, great.
Yep.
All righty. Next item?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you so much.
So next I want to invite up bilingual department head Kelly Jones and I want to invite up Dr. David Almeida.
Good evening.
How are you? Good to see you.
So they're going to update us on the Cape Verdean Teacher Exchange Program.
Yes.
So we welcome you and thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. So a few years ago, we participated in a cross-departmental institutional team to explore partnerships and experiences for our educators to learn the systems of other countries. About 60% of our English learner population are from Cape Verde, so and Brockton has a very long connection to the country of Cabo Verde. Dr. Almeida from the College of...
Education, Special Education Department in the College of Education.
It's a long title.
It really is, yeah.
At Bridgewater State University. We've worked together to foster a teacher exchange where one of our teachers would go over, stay with a teacher in that country and then they would come back and visit our schools. So it was approved a few years ago, but due to some logistical challenges, we were unable to follow through on the exchange process. We're very hopeful that 2019 is the year that we'll be able to launch the exchange program. There is an application process that has been vetted through the systems attorneys to ensure that there's a process in place for applicants to participate in it. We've sent you a two-page kind of overview of the program and we're just here to answer any questions about it.
Yeah.
You want to add anything?
No, that was great. Thanks. Any questions at all about anything, as minor or as major?
With regard to the exchange of professional teachers, would it be language teachers or what area would it be?
The criteria right now are really teachers who are the professional development partnership schools with Bridgewater State. So they have a long relationship in terms of professional development and hosting staff from Bridgewater State and their universities. So those schools that it's open to are Cabo Verde, Raymond, Gilmore.
Yep. Davis.
Davis. East.
And East, I think that's it, yeah.
Okay.
And in Cape Verde, it's open to any elementary teacher that the Ministry of Education would like to nominate to come, so.
So our goal is to try to have it in place for the start of the school next year?
So it's only a week-long exchange program?
Oh, it's not a year-long?
No.
Oh, I thought this was like a year-long program, a real...
No. The beauty of this is it's a week-long, I don't know what you call it, experience, I think is the way we like to talk about it. It's a week-long experience where the teacher comes, teacher from Cape Verde comes to Brockton, stays with a Brockton teacher, shadows the Brockton teacher all day at school for a week, and then at the end of the week, they both fly back to Cape Verde and the Brockton teacher stays with the teacher from Cape Verde. She shadows the Cape Verde teacher all week and then she comes back. So the beauty of it is it's between, it's on April vacation, so we don't need substitute teachers for anybody, which is really good. Cape Verde's vacations is staggered from, it's one week, either one week previous or one week after the Brockton schools' April vacation. So the cost is minimal. It's basically a round-trip plane ticket and that's it because the Brockton teacher hosts the Cape Verdean teacher, the Cape Verdean teacher hosts the Brockton teacher, and it's reciprocal.
I think I'd be more in favor if there's also a component where a school committee person gets to go as well.
Yeah, we could work on that.
And we can exchange school, you know.
We could work on that.
Yeah, that would be good.
It's a great idea.
So that way we can see how they manage their system and we manage our system, so...
We actually are trying to get some Brockton teachers to be able to go. About five years ago, I took Boston teachers and we went into schools and talked to teachers and administrators, met with the Minister of Education, so we'd like to do that with Brockton at some point.
Someone?
No.
Oh, okay. It sounds like a wonderful idea. I mean, I think that we can certainly learn from each other and just a good opportunity for, you know, exchange of ideas and certainly see if there's practices that could be helpful to them and practices that could be helpful to us, so.
Right.
You know, it's obviously a win-win.
And the selected teacher, I'm sure, would be willing to come back and share her experiences with you all after the exchange program.
I think that would be great, yeah.
And we've also built in that the teacher that goes to Cape Verde will also do professional development once she comes back here within her school building.
Good, great. Mr. Sullivan, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I just wanted to... What about the, like, the food and the hotel?
Yeah, all of that is reciprocal. So whoever decides to apply and then gets selected, they will have to be willing to pay for food and, I mean, entertainment if they want to go out to a movie or something, but, you know, it's mostly coming home from school, watching each other all day, coming home from school, having dinner together, talking about school. It's a very warm, close relationship that I think will develop, I'm hoping will develop.
Oh, it sounds like it will.
I think so. So, you know, if you apply, it's with the understanding that you have to host the Cape Verdean teacher and if that Cape Verdean teacher applies, it's with the understanding that you have to host her when you go back to Cape Verde. So the costs are basically the same for each teacher.
Right. So there's no extra costs as far as food or laundry or?
None.
And they stay in their house?
Yes.
And that's for free?
Both.
Wow. Good idea.
Thank you.
And then I think they're going down to Florida to your house, Mr. Sullivan. It's, like I said, it's a win-win.
I heard the next school committee meeting was at Mr. Sullivan's house in Florida.
Exactly, yeah. Anyone else? No?
I just want to say, Dr. Almeida, we, obviously the Brockton Public Schools appreciates their partnership with Bridgewater State.
Vice president.
Continue for so many programs and initiatives, so as always, we thank you and Bridgewater State for the partnership. It's always been great.
You're welcome, but our students grow immensely by coming into Brockton schools and the Brockton teachers, I teach a course, a week-long course in reading for special educators. I teach it at the Gilmore School on the Gilmore School property and the students, my students get to go out, write in the Gilmore School and work with kids there and then come back to the class and talk about what they learned from the students that are there. So it's a two-way street. So we thank you in Brockton as well.
No, thank you, you're welcome. It's great.
We've talked a little bit about it before at school committee meetings where we are very appreciative of the fact that, you know, we have a lot of students, as you know, who, you know, first-time students going to college and aren't exposed to, you know, university or college life and, you know, just having the opportunity to attend a program, you know, at your university opens eyes. It opens opportunities and, you know, puts positive ideas in our students' mind in terms of their future and what, you know, what there is out there beyond, you know, the confinements of their own elementary school or whatever it is. I mean, here you are visiting, you know, Bridgewater State University and I think one of the big things they love was the cafeterias.
Yeah, they love that.
Yeah.
In the summer, they have the bridge program and the footbridge program. I've taught in the footbridge program, but they just, they're nuts in the cafeteria. The kids are just like, this is so much fun.
I can remember when I was in the fifth grade, my teacher over at the Ashfield, Mary Del Sorto, she was a graduate of Stonehill and for one field trip, she brought the whole class over to Stonehill College and it was eye-opening for me. I still remember it to this day.
What was her name?
Mary Del Sorto.
I wonder if she had a name. I taught at Stonehill for 16 years, so I probably know her.
She was a teacher at the elementary level and then she became a principal here in the Brockton Public Schools.
Oh, she was a student teacher of mine.
Oh, okay.
She was, and not that I'm getting any older.
But again, it's just a great opportunity for the kids. It exposes them to things they never would be exposed to and it, I think, plants the seed, you know, of a future, you know, future plans and future opportunity. You know, there's no downside to it. It's just, you know, the potential to, you know, expand, you know, one's small little world and make it bigger and think, I can be there and I'd love to come here and, you know, pursue whatever it is, you know, in the future.
And we'd love to have them.
Yeah. So thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I would like to invite up Dr. Murray. He's going to introduce a video that was made, kind of like, almost like an recruitment video of showing students the great things that happened at Brockton High School. So it's called YBHS. So I'll have Dr. Murray talk about it, then we'll get out of the way so we can watch it.
She's not only on the soccer team but a captain, but I think more importantly, very representative of the student body with her volunteer work. She volunteers at the Project Grad's daycare, volunteers as a coach for Brockton U Soccer and also volunteers in our school store and as one of the announcers. So she's incredibly modest and although I haven't paid her yet for her comments earlier, I believe she has a bank now, so. But very typical of the students and their involvement, not only in athletics, she has a very demanding academic load, as she explained, she is thinking about med school, so very typical. The video you're going to watch, we have talked for a couple of years about trying to create something with a little more of a contemporary look and feel to it. We have a second-year teacher in our television studio and Mr. Halco with the assistance of his students and Ms. Richards, our director, created this video that we used for our eighth grade orientation and actually are hoping to use on our TVs in the building and ship to the middle school so that they can show this video as well. I think it's, again, a very nice representation of a very wide cross-section of young men and women that are fun to be around and are very serious about their community and their school. So without further ado, here we go.
teachers and my time here, my four years here, it's just been amazing. I had never felt so supported and so well-appreciated as I have received from these teachers.
One of the reasons I love Brockton High is because of how many different people there are here. There's so much diversity and you can learn so much from so many people and you can learn a lot about heritage and culture.
I love BHS because, you know, it's such a wide variety of people that, you know, I've met a great amount of people I've really never expected to meet. It's helped me find out where I belong in life. And the nursing program has helped that a lot. It's, you know, it's helped me choose my career essentially, what I want to do with my life. I've realized that I want to help people and this is my outlook.
I love BHS because there's a lot of diversity. It's not like one ethnicity can say there. I don't like being in like a plain school and I like this, like there's many different ethnicities around this school, so that's one reason why I love BHS.
I like BHS because of the arts program and the options they give you in the arts program. You get to learn and ready your skills or whatever you feel comfortable doing and I just feel like, especially in the TV department, it's just, it's really good.
Why?
What?
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 Lisa.
Why?
What?
Why?
Why?
Why BHS?
The United States!
So that's our first attempt at trying to do something we thought we maybe could get on cable and use in some of our visits to some of the middle schools, a little uptempo and student-driven. So that was created all in the TV studio with students, so some of them actually in the video, but a lot of them behind the scenes. You know, it really shows, you know, a big, you know, vast cross-section of what goes on at the school and all the good things that we know are there and it's great to have people be able to, you know, see it and, you know, market it to, you know, the middle school levels, you know, to make sure those students understand what there is at the high school and it's just, it was a nice piece, you know, very nice. I thought you looked pretty sharp there. Yeah, that was not, that was not part of the plan either. I noticed that nice dark suit and the red tie, yeah. So Sahar gets them every time. We do have some other things happening this week and next week, tomorrow is our Veterans Day celebration, so if there are any veterans watching, they have some time tomorrow from 9:30 to 11:30, they're more than welcome. Mr. McCreehan, the band, put on a very special performance along with some touching words from Lieutenant Colonel Clark, and then we have some guests as well. Very meaningful, a lot of students participate and attend. Next week, we have our National Honor Society induction, which is always very exciting as we usually have scores of students receiving that. And then the following week, right before Thanksgiving, we will be handing out our Abigail Adams Scholarship Award winners and last year's class garnered approximately 292 scholarships, so we have a lot of things to celebrate and to look forward to in the next couple of weeks. That's wonderful. I know a lot of our students benefit from that scholarship who attend, you know, UMass system, you know, whatever state school they choose to go to. It's obviously a benefit that flows with them to whatever, you know, UMass facility, campus they go to, so that's great. Mr. Gormley, I saw your hand.
Yes, I would, I really liked the video. I thought it was well put together and I'd love to see it, either condensed version or a new spot to be played on TV. I've seen Zavarian and Cardinal Spelman having spots, I think Southeastern too, on TV, so I think that that's something that we would probably have to discuss as a committee, but it's getting competitive out there. And our students are prized commodities to some schools, so it'd be great to...
Definitely.
Great to have some advertising out there.
I think that's what this was born from, actually. If one of us was in the South Shore Plaza last fall and they had a big Zavarian advertisement and we're easily as competitive in the classroom and on the athletic fields and in the concert halls as that building, so we wanted to showcase just a small little portion of that in that video.
Mr. DiAgostino?
Again, just kind of piggybacking off of Mr. Gormley's comments that, you know, I thought the video was well done and we have all kind of, there's been a lot of talk, I think, in the last few years about the fact that we need to make a better effort to market Brockton High and all that it has to offer, because again, even some of the outside towns are marketing for our kids to go there.
And they don't.
You know, I mean, so there, as Mr. Gormley said, there's a lot of competition now, but I think, you know, it's been talked about a lot and I like to see that we're, you know, moving forward with it and I like the idea that this is a video that you can put out there because more and more online, it's the clicking videos, watching videos, you know, that is more attractive, you know, to a lot of people who are looking at things online rather than, you know, maybe reading something or...
Correct.
You know, so, but it was really well done, so.
Good. Well, I'll make sure they know. I thought so. I also would suggest, you know, as a marketing tool, that, you know, we have a planetarium, we have our own swimming pool, we have a baseball stadium pretty much on-site, you know, that no other, you know, high school around here can compare to. We have a hockey rink right on campus too, so I mean, it would be great... This was done very quickly. Oh, yeah. All I'm just saying is those are great things. We talked about how we would actually maybe do a video that would have a little less student interaction perhaps, but give a broader overview of the facilities. We have some amazing biotech labs downstairs along with the robotics. We have some biology classrooms with all kinds of very fascinating animals and displays and then, of course, the fine arts wing really, that video doesn't give it justice, so there are certainly some other things in the works, but we thought we'd try that, at least with our eighth graders here in town, so. Yeah, no, that's great. Really good. There's a lot of positive things up there on this camp, on that campus, so.
Thank you, Dr. Murray. Appreciate it. Thank you. Next, I'll invite up Aldo Patronio to give us a quick update on advocacy and where we are right now.
Good evening. As we continue to advocate for school funding, we continue to meet with our state delegation, pushing for the acceptance of the Foundation Budget Review Commission's report, you know, concerning the appropriate funding for Brockton schools. As you know, that report came out almost four years ago at this point and since then the state legislature has made very little movement in taking all those recommendations and implement them. Recently, the Mass Budget Policy Center in Boston, an independent group, came out with a report that said if the state were to implement all of that funding, Brockton alone would receive $49 million in one year of an increase if we follow that formula. So the state knows they have to move on this. We in turn want to keep pressure on the state to move on this for the funding. We've been working with MASs, which is the Superintendent's Association. They have a consultant... Association. They have a consultant. We have various legal firms that are getting involved to help move our case forward with in-house doing research and providing them with data that they need for this case. As you know, we've done a tale of two cities and then we've done a tale of four cities. From that, many other cities are now contacting us, cities and towns, asking to get involved and would like to, you know, get the same data on their cities to see basically how behind they are in the formula for funding that they should receive. So, our next step on that is to meet with the southeastern Mass area, you know, far over in the Bedford area. And then after that, go up to like the North Shore area and meet with districts up there. And it's not just the urban districts. We're meeting with everyone, trying to get everyone involved in this. So, the governor's budget comes out in the end of January. Right after October 1, they start formulating the budget. You know, they look at the numbers and who has what students across the state. So it's important that we keep the pressure on and we keep letting them know that we're watching this and we want them to put the appropriate funding in. So, basically, the advocating is continuing. Our state reps and our state senator are all back, re-elected in office, and they know the push that we're making. So, we're just pushing forward with that.
Any questions or comments?
Board of Ed meeting, the governor had requested through, I think Secretary Pize, recommendations on implementing the Foundation Budget Review or something along those lines, which I thought was pretty funny because he can just do it.
Correct. The fact that it's short by $2 billion is what's really, has them dragging their feet because they say they don't know how to pay for it. Yet the governor's ads, as you all saw on TV, so they're in a surplus of $1 billion last year. So, we know we're not going to get to $2 billion overnight, but they can start putting more into the budget than they have been.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, Aldo, that I was with you and Mr. Thomas about two weeks ago. We went to the Holyoke.
Holyoke, yes.
And a long ride up there. I didn't believe it, so far.
I thought we made pretty good times.
We did. We had a good driver. But anyway, yours, the speeches you made up there were fabulous. And as well as you and the superintendent, I mean, you're really advocating this, trying to get that approved. And it's not just for Brockton, it's for all the cities and towns involved.
Exactly. Exactly. The formula, they say, is broken. The formula has just never kept up with inflation, especially health insurance costs, retirement costs, and specialized costs. It has not kept up with it. And really, what we're asking for is that they keep up with inflation and give us the appropriate funding for it. There's not much more to ask.
I just wanted to say you're doing a real good job, as well as Mr. Thomas and the superintendent. Without you three, nothing would happen.
Thank you. Thanks for coming with us.
You kind of made the point that I wanted to make with, they're talking about how state revenues are up and there's surplus, but, so now it's time to fix it now that the governor's put that out publicly in an election year. I can't imagine any excuse, any valid excuse, not to make some progress. I think, like you said, nobody's expecting them to spend $2 billion next year, but start to phase in, you know, some changes that fix what we've been dealing with the last three or four years. You know, you can't go on TV and brag about all this surplus you've created and then cry poor mouth when it's time for school funding. I think the cat's out of the bag, if you will.
My state conferences for school business officers, a couple months ago, I basically made the statement that 400 million a year over five years catches us up. We'll be a little behind because of inflation at that point. But right now, they barely give us 100 million more a year, barely. So, really, what they need to do is multiply that by four. So if they have the state surplus, we're asking for, what, 40% of it, but send it our way where it needs to go.
Thank you, Mr. Patronio. Mr. Thomas?
And then, quickly, a safety and security update. By the time we get into Christmas break, the holiday break, we will have, the new entrances will be finished at West and the Kennedy School, like we have at East and Downey and Davis and Raymond. So, those will be installed and ready to go by the time students come back after the holiday break. If you've noticed, if anybody has been by the guarded school, which obviously is now closed, but we still have control of, the Brockton Police, Brockton Fire Department and Bruce the Ambulance have been working over there together on drills, on response to active shooter training. It's a joint effort between the Fire Department, the Police Department, and Bruce the Ambulance and how you approach a situation. Obviously, it has the police going in and doing what they need to do and then quickly getting the Fire Department in to obviously, you know, respond to injured people as they go in. So it's, the equipment they have is amazing. It's new equipment that they're dealing with, body armor, body gear. So, they're over there all this week and two or three days next week. So, it's fortunate that we've been able to maintain the guarded school as far as, you know, just, you know, the heat's on low. But, and we maintain the building so they can conduct these kind of drills during the day and train pretty much the whole department, both departments, the Fire Department and the Police Department. So, that's going on this week and it's really going well. And the schools continue to conduct their lockdown and stay-in-place drills all the time. We did the bus drills in October, bus evacuation drills. They'll continue again in April. So, again, unfortunately, things we have to plan for, we plan for and we train for. And we continue to do that and not stop. So I just wanted to give you a quick update on that.
Great. Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Sullivan?
I don't know if you can update us a little bit on the paint in the traffic lines crossing schools? Or is that
Yeah, that's actually, they've approved us to help them with doing the crossing, the crosswalks in, on the streets, the main streets in front of some of our schools. We wanted to start some of that painting last Saturday. You know, the weather has to be just right. We may have to make sure we have a police detail that blocks one side of the street so people don't drive over the lines. It's quick drying paints. It usually dries within 10 minutes, but you can't paint it and then leave it. So, and then unfortunately, last Saturday, it poured. So, we're hoping
Poured hard.
Yeah, we're hoping again to plan it for this Saturday because you have to have a detailed officer. So again, we're going to try to do the crosswalks in, on the, in front of the schools on the busy streets like North Quincy, Pearl, Oak. Those, and we'll do that in the fall and continue to do it into the, in the spring when the weather breaks again.
Is that going to be white or different colors?
They'll be, they'll be white. They'll be white, but again, they're going to let us do the ladder design. So you have the lines that go through the middle so they're easier to see.
Oh, you spot that a mile away?
Yeah. So, we'll continue to work and hopefully the weather cooperates.
Nice job. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Okay. Unfinished business? Well, we had a meeting, obviously, about the superintendent's contract. I was going to schedule another meeting on that for this Tuesday. Tuesdays are usually a good night for us. There's nothing else scheduled. And Wanda provided us with last year's evaluation and a blank with respect to this year's evaluation. So, this could give us an opportunity to talk about all these questions and ratings together and perhaps even put together a joint response with all of us commenting in terms of, you know, each of the different criteria. Wanda is going to be present for that meeting. The superintendent would, will not be. Basically, it's our meeting to go over the information in terms of evaluating her performance. So, what time would work for everyone? Six, 6:30?
Six.
Six?
Six.
Okay, so why don't we try for 6 o'clock here, do you think, or? Where would you like to do it?
Doesn't matter. It was suggested in her conference room.
Oh, okay. That's fine. Okay.
No, is this something new?
No, this is, we did this one last year.
Yeah, I had the one. It's different than the one we had the other night.
This is, this is, no, this is the, this is the, this is the same exact tool.
Oh, I, okay, never mind. I have three of them.
Okay.
Never mind.
Okay. All right, so we can do that. And then I think, well, that's old business. Anything else under old business? No? Okay, so new business, I know that we needed to schedule another subcommittee meeting for, did you mention the 26th or?
Well, yeah, we're trying to look at the 26th for the curriculum.
Okay. Can people just take a quick look at their calendars while we're here and just see if the 26th might be a doable evening?
What would that be?
That would probably be here, right? Yeah.
That would be available till after 7:00 that night.
Could you be available before 7:00?
I might be about 10 minutes late, but
Okay. All right.
We'll start at 7:00.
Why don't we start at 7:15? 7:15 so Mark can be here on time?
Yeah.
Okay. 26, yep. I don't have anything either, so, okay, great. All right. Anything else under new business? Mr. Gormley?
I have two items. The Class of 98, the BHS Class of 98 is having a reunion on, oops, I forgot the date. It's the 24th of November, which is the Saturday after Thanksgiving at Barrett's Ale House in West Bridgewater. Tickets are available through our Facebook page, which is the Brockton High Class of 98 reunion. It's kind of hard to find. If you go to my Facebook page, you'll find it, or you can email me at bregormley@ward4@gmail.com. So you have a couple of days left to buy tickets. The second thing I have is something regarding athletics. I have a statement that I'm going to read that is part of a formal complaint that I'm sending to the MIAA, which is the regulatory body for athletics in the state of Massachusetts for mostly public high schools. So, "Over the last 20 years, I've watched student athletes in the city be lured away from Brockton High School by Catholic schools and private schools, some that are in the MIA, some that are not. But in Rule 44.3 of the MIA handbook states, 'Any attempts to place a student in a member school by any person for the purposes of enhancement of that athlete's athletic development or for increased exposure shall be deemed recruitment.' Some schools, such as Catholic Memorial, have made it a practice to actively recruit Brockton players from our youth basketball and football leagues, which while not a violation of the MIA rules, I find it to be against the spirit of the MIA's mission and scholastic athletics in general." Catholic Memorial coach, football coach, John DiBiasso, built the dynasty in Everett, in Everett High School, in part by recruiting players, many from Boston, which I coached middle school football in Boston. And I witnessed the recruiting firsthand. I had four players taken on a recruitment trip to Everett High School and one of them ended up going there after playing at another high school. And while student transfers within public schools are vetted through school choice or through residency, when a student transfers from a public school to a MIA Catholic school, there's no vetting. There's no safeguarding that these families are not being misled. For instance, if a school says clearly in their handbook that they do not service IEPs and a student who's a good athlete goes to this school and has an IEP, they're going to this school. Their IEP, according to the handbook, isn't being serviced. To me, that's a disservice to the child. These schools have seen their enrollment declining, so they're using these athletes as a way to recruit other students. These students, who are great athletes, are mainly from urban areas. And they're being used as props, as marketing tools, in my opinion. In my time as a school committee member in Brockton, I've been fighting with the state to receive proper funding for our students. And during this time, these schools, such as Catholic Memorial, Zavarian, Boston College High School, St. John's Prep build multimillion-dollar weight rooms just for athletics, practice facilities such as indoor practice facilities that house football fields, and athletic fields that cost millions of dollars that you do not find on public school properties. I don't fault them for their efforts to have top-notch facilities. Everybody wants to do the best that they can for their students. But I do find fault with the MIA not finding a way to level the playing field for public schools, especially urban schools, because urban schools, as we all know, are going through a very tough time economically. This is not exclusive to boys' basketball and football. Because of club sports, soccer, male and female soccer, students are being encouraged to not play for their high schools. The same holds true for hockey and baseball, because in AAU and club sports, there's more exposure to certain college recruiting. So this has created a culture where student athletes feel that they are not up to par if they're not in one of these schools, which to me is a detriment to our kids in Brockton. And it's created a culture where our kids feel less than. And it's something that we have to deal with as Brocktonians all the time. People hear you're from Brockton and they think less of you. Not everybody, but, you know, we're fighting a reputation. And I'm tired of fighting that quietly, so I'm speaking up tonight. It's time for the MIA to enforce their rules. And it's also time for them to adopt rules that help programs and not hinder them. It's time for them to loosen out-of-season regulations. Students, student athletes are not allowed to participate in off-season workouts that are related to the sport that involve equipment. They can do conditioning and other things. But in most other states, this is allowed. And it's something that schools with large endowments are able to pay people and have people take their students to facilities such as indoor soccer and indoor football facilities in the off-season and skirt the rules. We don't simply have the resources to do that in public schools and especially urban schools. Since Brockton High School won their last Super Bowl in 2005, one other public high school has won a Super Bowl championship in Division I that is a public school. The rest have been Catholic schools. Central Catholic, St. John's Prep, Boston College High School, to name a few. This imbalance was noticed and addressed in baseball and hockey. And I don't think it's a coincidence that in baseball and hockey, we have student, we have parents of students who have means and agency to advocate for fairness. And in some sports, that is not the case. So this needs to be addressed. We're labeling anyone, we're allowing anyone who labels themselves a coach to guide our student athletes through the treacherous waters of high school and college recruiting. And to me, I would rather have somebody who is a public school teacher or a vetted coach that works for a school system to be guiding these young people through this process. It can get very, very dirty, I guess you would say. And we have people that are passionate and care about our kids in every school, but in, especially in urban schools, we need to be able to maintain these relationships with our student athletes throughout the season. And a school like Brockton High, that's hundreds of students. So I'm tired of seeing students being sold the dream instead of being told the truth. And if you are around high school sports, you see a lot of students have their dreams overinflated by people who really are not qualified to guide them through that. So, "I requested that all Brockton High School teams not schedule Catholic Conference teams during the regular season. I urge all players who have had, all schools who have had players illegally recruited from their teams to do the same. We will not provide access or free advertising in our city as long as these practices continue. I'll be taking steps to ensure that entities encouraging Brockton students to attend non-Brockton public schools for the purposes of athletics will deny, denied access to our facilities." It's time to put Brockton first.
Thank you, Mr. Gormley. Okay.
We appreciate it.
I agree, something has to be done.
Thank you.
Yep, it's been a long time.
This is a long time, kind of.
Yep. And the MIA was always quick to watch what Brockton was doing in our heyday when we were winning a lot of championships. They were, always had us under the microscope.
And they love to use our facilities.
Yep.
Okay, anything else? Anything else?
I have a couple things. I want to just thank the Brockton High School students, the Student Council, National Honor Society, and the Boxer Buddies for the Halloween hallway. That was last Tuesday, the 30th. We had over 600 elementary students attend. It was packed. They had face painting, cookie decorating games. As always, the Halloween hallway is such a great event for the community, and the Brockton High School teachers and especially students do a great job putting it together. It's a lot of hard work, a lot goes into it. So we appreciate that. I also want to say on something that has been disturbing over the last week, there have been five children throughout the country that have been hit and killed while waiting for buses, and it's been an issue. Three of these young children were from the same family in Indiana the day before Halloween, and this had to do with drivers just ignoring the stop arm that comes out when the bus stops at a bus stop. As you know, the arm comes out, the stop sign comes out, and I've witnessed it, not only in Brockton and several towns where someone just tries to get by because they don't want to be held up for the three minutes it takes for the kids to get on the bus, so they try to jump that arm. Unfortunately, over the last week, five children have lost their lives. So I want to remind drivers that when the school bus slows down and the lights start to flash, you really need to stop on both sides of the street. You know, we have 9,000 students that take the buses to school, and we have 50 buses running throughout the city. As you know, the city's congested, the streets can get packed with cars parking on both sides, and students are students and kids are kids. They run out sometimes without thinking. When they see that stop sign come out, the stop arm come out, they'll just go across the street, think they get on the bus, and when a car doesn't stop, obviously, bad things can happen. So I just want to remind drivers to just, when buses are out there and the flashing lights go on and the stop arm comes out, you need to really be careful and stop. And it can save a life, and waiting three minutes is not a big deal. So I just want to remind everybody about that. It's important, it's a major safety issue.
Obviously, we had Halloween in the city. Kids that came to my neighborhood were great, all of them very well behaved. I got a call from Dr. Applin, reiterating the same thing. She wanted me to make sure I mentioned at the school committee meeting that all the kids in her neighborhood were very polite and very creative with their costumes. So we always thank her for checking in with us. I think we're also going to schedule a facilities meeting before our next school committee meeting at 6:30, just to discuss some policies with regard to rentals and rules to follow. So if everyone could be there for that, that would be good. Anyone else? No? Okay. Nothing with regard to executive session this evening? I do not believe, unless someone sees a reason to go into executive session. No? Okay. Mr. Thomas, you all set?
I'm all set. Thank you.
All set?
Could I just say one thing? I just wanted to thank Brett because I didn't realize any of that was going on. I can tell it took a long time to put that speech together, and I think we should support him 100%, all of us, not just him. He did a good job with it.
Mm-hmm. Agreed.
Nice job, Brett.
Okay. Okay. Anything else?
I'll second his motion.
All right. Motion to adjourn, all in favor? Okay. We are adjourned. Thank you.